Just thirty. Good evening and happy Thursday. We finally have the sun out today, so I hope you got to enjoy a little bit of that sun. I'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you can unmute yourself and place your right hand on your heart, we can get the meeting going.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The Republic of America, which is standing one nation under God.
And just the word of God.
The word of God.
It was just a prayer.
Thanks, everyone. Make sure to mute yourself. We would like to get started with motion to close last night's public hearing. Comment section. Do I have a motion?
I haven't made a motion.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Awesome. Thank you. I will turn it over to Dr. Beta.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Chair Garcia, I, we do have two guests tonight that I'd like to introduce. Sal D. Domenico, he's our Massachusetts State Senator, and he is here to speak to us about Student Opportunity Act. Sal, are you here?
I am here, just to.
Great. Well, welcome.
Thanks for having me. You want me to start?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you, Madam Superintendent and Madam Chair and members of the Committee, and this is a little unconventional way of sending my, my greetings and sending our thoughts at the State House of what's happening when it comes to education and make sure that we have the tools that we need going forward. But I wanted to give a brief update on where we are in the budget and how things are looking short term and long term. And I know that you're going to be doing your own budgeting. This is happening right now. Everything is very fluid, but I wanted to give you an update of where we're going and what the outlook looks like right now. So we have not decided on how much we are going to give to our cities and towns in terms of local aid in Chapter Seventy at this point. The governor's budget came out in January, and by this time in a normal year, we would have a lot of this already, already done. The House would have done their budget by now. The Senate would have done their budget in a couple of weeks from now, and cities and towns would have a clear picture of what money is being spent for our schools. So as we know, Student Opportunity Act was a very exciting bill that was passed. We had a lot of people that were very happy about it, and everybody was thrilled that we could get something like that passed and change the outlook for a long, long time for our kids. Then the pandemic happened, and things have changed dramatically since that time. The budget for this fiscal year is about literally nine hundred million dollars off after we have already accounted for borrowing for offsetting our tax collections in April. So as you know, we pushed back our tax collections for April, which left a big hole there. But even on top of that, nine hundred million dollars is looking like that'll be our deficit between now and the end of the fiscal year. That, we hope, will be filled in and backfilled with federal funding. We know there's a big bill coming down the pipeline right now in the House of Representatives in Congress, and that will help us to, to fill that hole. The next fiscal year, based off of the governor's numbers, I know some communities are actually looking at the governor's numbers to try to do budgeting. That would be a mistake. That would be a big, big mistake because the governor's numbers are very, very, they're so far off now from reality, and I wanted to explain that to all of you tonight because I know that you're going through that right now. So the, the governor's budget was, with all things being rosy, the picture being, being, being good, came up with a big number for Chapter Seventy. And that was the number that we were probably all going to be using because that was the number we promised for our school departments. Since that time, the projections for next fiscal year are that we are going to be between four to six billion dollars off of that number. Four to six billion dollars, which the consensus there is about five, five and a half billion is what the number looks like to be, to be different from what the governor had projected in his own budget. That being said, we all know that means that the numbers are not going to match up, and we're going to be in a very different place than we were in January. The, in the past, when we've gone through a similar recession type of curve in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, we ended up cutting local aid by twenty-eight percent. And that was before I got into the Senate, but that was the number that was used, twenty-eight percent cut to local aid, which is a very big, big number. And it took us almost two and a half years to recover, to put that money back into where it was previous to that point. We are looking at the prospect of doing one-twelfth budgets. So that will mean that we just do monthly budgets up until we are confident that we can get a full budget for the rest of the year. And in past years, the one-twelfth budget was good news for some districts because it only meant one-twelfth of last year's budget, meaning that whatever number it was in, you know, last June or last January, you get the same number for this month. That is not the case this time around. The one-twelfth budget will be independent budget of where we are in real dollars at the time. And that puts a strain on the cities and towns because when we're doing one-twelfth budgets, that would probably mean the cities and towns have to keep, keep pace with that, doing one-twelfth budgets because it would be hard to know long term what the number would look like. We've given the cities and towns the ability to wait until the end of June to come up with a budget, a plan, a budget plan. We are hoping to get our number to the cities and towns of where we have our local aid and for Chapter Seventy by the beginning of June. So there's some, somewhat of a plan going forward with the state dollars and the city dollars matching up. But I do want to, you know, caution everyone, and everyone knows I am a huge proponent of education. Everyone knows that I am fighting every day to get every single dollar, in particular to our gateway cities like Everett and Chelsea where we need the money the most. And this isn't about equity. No more equity. This is about giving our cities and towns that need the most, they should be getting the most. So it's important for us to, to know that from this lens. So I just want to just caution you because the number that's going to be coming for Chapter Seventy for all cities and towns will be, well, not be what we expected going into the year, obviously. But I am working with Danny Ryan, Rosie Vincent, and our delegation to make sure that Chelsea gets more than their fair share because we understand the challenges that are facing our community. We know what's happening in terms of the impact in public health and also for our schools, but more importantly, we have more needs and we should be getting more dollars. That, that, it should not be an equity case. This should be targeted approach. So it's really important for, for you to understand that we, we are, we're fighting for, but I want to be honest as well. The numbers don't look that great at this point in time. My three priorities are public health, education, and public safety. Those are the three things that we're going to try to hold as humble as we can. But, but, you know, the best case scenario that we can hope for would be level funding. That is the best case scenario. And level funding is not going to be helpful in some districts, including Chelsea. I know because everything goes up year to year. But I wanted to come on the call tonight, and I wanted, I know that you're going through that process now, just to give you somewhat of an outlook that, that this is, you know, you can't expect the numbers to be where they were prior to this pandemic. And also the opportunity of going back to school in September and how that would look as well. There's a lot of planning in place there. A lot of people talking about that. But as you can imagine, you know, staggered starting times potentially, cafeteria is not being opened, recess not happening the way we always think, you know, gym classes, lowering class sizes, buses, you know, the kids on buses, even our smallest learners in early education, they don't understand that they can't be around their friends and, 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 you know, touch their friends and have close contact with them. So there's a lot of challenges for educators, for our school committee members, the superintendent, and I know that, that, you know, Chelsea is a community that, that, that is, it is, you know, resilient, but, you know, we also have a lot of things that we have to share in common with the rest of the state in terms of how we educate our kids and, and the confines of this pandemic. So it's, it's a challenge, and with all those things that I mentioned, all the obstacles and challenges, those also cost more dollars. So there's a lot more going into this. So we have to come up with a plan at the state level to, to assist you with all those changes. But I do want to just, you know, come out here tonight and just let you know, we're working on it. But level funding is, 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 is the best case scenario from what we had last year. And the money that we're getting from Student Opportunity Act is probably not going to, well, it's, it's not going to happen this year. It just doesn't, you know, the, the numbers don't match up, but a five billion dollar cut to our budget is, is going to be very difficult to make up when half of our budget potentially is going into healthcare. That, that half off the top, right, there, there is going into healthcare, and that was prior to the pandemic, so even more so now. So, I mean, any questions for me? But I wanted to just let you know that, and, and I know Danny Ryan is, is, I'm not sure if he's on the call yet, but I know he wanted to come out here as well and talk about a couple of things, but that is, that's the picture going forward. But, but know that, that, you know, our delegation is, is fighting, and, and education will be on the top of the list of the minimal, you know, minimal cuts as possible going forward. So we're, we're, we're working on it hand to hand with the House and the Senate together and the governor's team.
I believe Ms. Alfara has a question on the chat.
Hi, thank you, Sal, for such a great presentation and explanation. The question that I have is if there is anything that we can do at the national level, is anything that is, you know, that we can push for more money for the state?
Yeah, so there, there is a, is a proposal, and, and, you know, I'm not making this partisan at all because this is not a partisan, but this is reality, what's happening right now. The Democratic House in the, in, in Congress is pushing for a major, major stimulus package for our cities and towns. And when that happens, the money that was, that will be directed to cities and towns will be proportionate depending on the need and, and the formula. Title I communities, economic disadvantaged communities, those are the communities that are going to see, you know, the higher amount of money coming from the federal government through our state. So everything is contingent on, on that. So if there's more money coming from the federal government, then more money will be distributed to our communities. The way the federal bill is, is written, there is money earmarked for education. So it would be filtering into our state, going to the Department of Education, a desk, and then it would be distributed to our communities based on the formula. So we were hoping and we're watching, I just don't want to raise any, any hopes because we all know what's happening in DC, and we all know that there's a lot of moving parts there. The Senate also has to go along with this. But I know that there were Republican US senators that are very, very, very anxious to get something passed as well. So leadership on, on the Senate side doesn't always talk in concert with the House side about, you know, a bailout package for our states. But I know that there are many, many US senators on the other side who are pushing their leadership to do this. So I have more faith than, than I usually do, and honestly, to, to have the Senate also look at these this favorably because they're hearing from the governors and their local communities as well. But the federal government has a big, big role, very big role in this. So if they, the money filtered down through this package that they have put up, it's a three trillion, trillion, three trillion dollar package. So a lot of that money is coming to us, and it would be a real difference maker in communities like Chelsea if that passed.
Thank you. Just please let us know if we can support in any, you know, signature or anything that we can be advocates with you because I know that you and Ryan and Spilka and everybody else is advocating on behalf of the children in education. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question, if I may. Okay, sorry. So, so I guess you said that, I guess, level funding would be the best case scenario. Is that assuming that this funding bill from the federal government passes? So if we, you know, if we don't have that money, then I'm assuming that, that level funding would not be possible. Or, and then if, if that is not the case, and then this bill does get funded, then, I guess, what's the mechanism there would then? Level funding, above level funding, would that be a possibility, or would then kind of funding get distributed to, to kind of other districts to make sure that it's funded, you know, equally instead of equitably? I'm, I'm curious. I'm curious what the scenarios look like if, if this appropriations bill passes from, from Congress versus not, and what the kind of best case scenario might look like in those two scenarios.
Right. That's a good, good question because everything is, is very fluid at the moment. So so if there was no package passed and nothing was happening from DC and we didn't get any help federally, then the nine billion dollar cut, a nine billion dollar shortage from the governor's budget would impact every level of the budget. But again, it would not be equal. So when the, the last time we had the recession, local aid took a hit. Local aid number and Chapter Seventy are very, are different numbers. Unrestricted local aid is different than, than Chapter Seventy. Chapter Seventy took a, a, a cut, but there wasn't twenty-eight percent. It was more like the four or five range. That is what I mean when we're trying to do targeted cuts, if we do something like that, meaning that we would try to spare education as much as possible in the whole scheme of things. If there was no federal bailout and no federal package, I still think we would, it would be lower than, than the number of, of, you know, it would be, it's, it's, it's hard, hard to give you a number if I know you're budgeting now, and I don't want you to hang on every word that I'm saying, but
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My opinion, in my opinion, level funding without the federal package could be possible. It's not guaranteed, but it could, could very well be possible because we know, I know in my, in my head, and we have talked to Ways and Means as well, there are some places where we can make some cuts that will hurt less than others. But education is a top priority at the State House. There is no doubt about that. This is something that we made a promise to our communities on. So we're trying to minimize any kind of cuts or any kind of problems or obstacles that we have in, in, in our, in our schools. But level funding would be tough with all the federal funds, but not impossible. If there was a federal funding package sent to us, it would go through our state, our education, and will follow Chapter Seventy formula. So you would, so cities and towns would get, get more money depending on the Title One, Title One status is, is what they go by in the federal level. So Title One is, is their term they use, but it's the same as we use here, economic disadvantaged kids and, and low income communities. That, that, that's what Title One means. So when, when you see that on any kind of federal flow charts, that's what Title One means. It means cities like Chelsea that need, need support. So Chelsea and Everett, my, my two communities that I, that I always push hard for education funding for because it's obviously, the need is there. So those communities would fall into that category, and parts of Boston as well. But, but you would not get an equitable distribution of funds from the federal, federal level. It would be targeted according to the Chapter Seventy levels. So Chelsea would get more than their fair share in comparison to other communities. You know, we've been fighting for the, the, we, the first round of potential cuts. We've all made our voices heard in the gateway communities that, that this, you know, the cuts should not be equal. Some people want equal cuts, you know, because equal does not affect them as much. But equal cuts would, would be, would be devastating for Chelsea because, you, you know, we, 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 we just, we just can't have the same percentage of cut that other communities have because we need those dollars more than they do. So, you know, equality means a net loss for us. So this is, you know, equality in some places, you know, is, is good. And in funding levels for our schools, equality is not good in terms of cutting and, and terms of percentages. So we have to make sure that we fight harder for those dollars. But the federal government, the federal government bill would definitely, definitely ease the burden. And, but it would definitely, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the promises made on the Student Opportunity Act from last time, but it would help ease our pain in terms of trying to, to backfill some of the holes we're creating. And also, it's not just Chapter Seventy. There's a lot of grant programs there. There are a lot of earmarks that I've gotten for Chelsea in the past. There's a lot of different things that we, and we have been able to do, you know, not even, not including Chapter Seventy. So those are also part of the operating budget over time because you get them all every year. So, you know, head start grants, all these different things that, that are happening in, in the, you know, that are federal dollars filtering into our community that have an impact on our young people. You know, so we have to just watch all of those other programs that we don't always look to, but they're there always because it kind of guaranteed money. They just happen all the time. And those are the things that, that are not guaranteed anymore either. Like all the MROCs that we got for Chelsea in the past, we were actually going to get more for the music program this year, and I promised the kids in the music program they were going to get, you know, money to travel to different places and money for Connect, money for TND. There's a lot of moving parts here that, that affect our families. But those earmarks that we've always gotten in the past, you've already been told, we're not getting any, any, any MROCs that we've gotten in the past. So that's what we need to.
So ju- just a quick follow-up. So just, let's assume, you know, a, a good scenario where we, where we get level funding from the state, regardless of what happens at the federal level. If that money were to come in from the federal government at that point, would it not be a priority to go above level funding and just have that money be redirected elsewhere, or, no, I guess it's like, like, what is the priority, you know, i- if we're able to, like, is the priority to keep it level, or is the priority to kind of try to redirect as much as possible and hopefully even go above that? I guess this?
Yeah, so, so we'll, we'll know what the federal government, it hasn't, their plans prior to releasing any numbers to the cities and towns. So there, there won't be a step two to this. The reason why the federal government is working now is because they, they know that our, for the most part, most states following our, our fiscal year. So they're trying to make the burden a little easier for people to make decisions at the local level. The governors have been pushing this date for a while because they understand that their number is dependent on what we do. So level funding would be, would be the holy grail. You know, i- i- it would, if we got level funding, it would be, it would be, it would be amazing. You know, I, I don't want to, I, going above all the funding, it would have to be a very, very, very big, big package coming out of DC. But I, I, I'm hesitant to say something like that because I don't want to skew your budget talks. Right now, I would anticipate, you know, best case scenario level funding, best case scenario.
Thank you.
Senator Sal, thank you so much. I have one quick question. So I worry that my constituents will not be able to fill out the census for various amount of reasons. And I'm just wondering, what are their plans being talked about, made to, to support our, our families here in filling out the census?
Yeah, the census is, is, is huge for us. I talked to Secretary of State Galvin on, on Monday, and he called me actually because he was very concerned about Chelsea's numbers and Everett's numbers. And he is going to be directing some more money into our communities, both of those communities, to try to, try to raise those numbers. It's difficult without the pandemic going on, but this has been, this has made it, you know, even, even more difficult. So it, it's, it's all about, you know, trying to get those trusted neighbors and organizations, and those same people now are out there feeding our residents. And those same people are out there trying to keep people afloat. So the usual people that would be doing all this work in our communities have now shifted their operations to keeping people afloat and, and, and also, and, and it's very important work, obviously, that's just living people, you know, day by day, people need help. So it's a challenge. So we're trying to get more funding into our cities that are, that are hardest hit with this, and knowing that the, the collection of this and getting the word out to people is, is doubly more difficult. But that was, because we have Secretary of State, so I expect more funding to come in. It's not going to be a huge amount of money because of what we have, our constraints in the budget, but he has money in his budget used for the census, and he's redirecting that to these communities that, that need it. So there's more help on the way in terms of resources, dollars-wise, but, like, getting people on the ground is going to be, is even more difficult because, like I said, they're doing other work now. And, and we all know who they are in the city of Chelsea. The, the, the same groups have always stepped up and always done a lot of work in this realm, and, and we all, we all know what they're doing now too. So it's, it's difficult. It's difficult, but the resources in terms of money will be coming.
Thank you. And I believe Marisol has a question. Marisol, go ahead.
I can't hear her.
Yep. Marisol, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Is this better?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So thank you again. I'm sorry. I was just thanking the Senator for joining us and just wanted to ask in terms of process for folks that are tuning in, in live. I know that typically in our public, for, you know, our public school committee formal meetings, we allot time for, you know, folks to come up and speak, and, you know, I know that we're trying to make some adjustments given this virtual setting and, and what we're in the midst of. But nonetheless, just thanking you, Senator, for being here, and just wanted to make sure that if, you know, I'm not sure whether, you know, Dr. Albeta or Chairwoman Garcia, if State Representative Dan Ryan was going to speak, or if folks were going to allow time for questions because I wanted to be mindful of our time and for the rest of the agenda and didn't want to sort of, you know, us spiral too far. But, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge, Senator, that, you know, I think gratefully, you know, I've known you long enough and a lot of folks here that Chapter Seventy has been, you know, a problem for as long as we can remember. And so the formula and just how our city has typically historically been funded continues to be, you know, a big heartbreak. And I want to thank you for your advocacy around, you know, SOA. And not only that, but when we've discussed charter reimbursements at every level, I know you've been an advocate and a voice. And those are things that we're still paying attention to. Nonetheless, this pandemic has just literally exacerbated all the problems that we've faced for many, many years. And so I'm just, you know, I'm grateful that, you know, we have voices that continue to, you know, to pave the pavement. I think here, a, a couple of us that I could speak for, you know, and I'm sure every single school committee member, we all agree that we're up against something completely unheard of in terms of virtual learning and all the needs we're going to have. We're committed to figuring those things out as a collective body with, you know, the wonderful team that we have in Central Office and with the teachers. I know that our governor has not really moved a whole lot on these issues before, unfortunately, and I think there's always opportunities for continued advocacy there as well as leadership in the House. So I'm just really paying attention to all those things really carefully as well. We sent letters. You know, those letters will continue. Those phone calls will continue. I don't think this is the time for us to press back, and so very grateful that you've been, you know, lifting this and continuously and, you know, bringing attention to the matter that Chelsea, you know, is going to be impacted so hard compared to other towns across the Commonwealth. So with that, you know, there's a number of things that we have to continue to advocate on. You know, we just looked at the budget, even level funding, charter reimbursement stuff is still, you know, a concern. So let alone going forward, I would just ask that, you know, whether State Representative Ryan, you can continue to speak to your colleagues in the House, in particular to, you know, the Speaker, DeLeo, and see what the body can do collectively to really continue to lift, you know, our community up. Senator, thank you again for, you know, just continuing to pave the pavement on this. And, you know, we are, we're 100% with you. And I think that it's clear that, you know, the school committee really wants to be, you know, lifting, you know, our students up at every, every turn and supporting our superintendent in those efforts so that we can, you know, stay ahead of this as much as possible, knowing that we have a lot that's coming, coming before us down the pipe. But yeah, I would just say, you know, just Um, but yeah, I would just say, you know, just wanted to make sure in terms of process that we give folks, you know, the opportunity, you know, to ask questions and that, you know, thank you for coming and speaking with us tonight, um, around this specifically, around this way.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Beta, you're muted.
I know, I'm, oh, sorry. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. I did want to give, um, thank, um, um, State Representative Daniel Ryan for being here as well. Um, I don't know if if you have anything for us, um, that you would like to share on on your side of the House.
Sure. First of all, I'd just like to thank you for inviting me and and thank you for all the work you're doing. It's it's tough times, but I really do appreciate the way people are pulling together and and letting all voices be heard and especially Chelsea. You've definitely caught the na- nation's attention in terms of what we need going forward and what communities like Chelsea have needed in the past. Look, as the Senator said, we're looking at tough fiscal times. Level funding, I mean, who who would have thought after last year's victory in the education bu- budget that we'd be looking at level funding a- as a victory? But in saying that with the Senator's expertise in the Ways and Means Committee and the way we work together, there are ways we can address that, the the, or at least fill some holes. When the education budget reached an impasse and we, you know, we had a thirty year promise to our cities and towns that wasn't kept, we reached an impasse the last four to six years, we're really trying to fix that formula. And we basically threw the formula out and it was because we were hearing from people and because the formula just never lived up to expectation. But in the interim, we were able to plug holes and I'm glad the, um, charter school reimbursement come up because it was little things like that. In the House, it's a little different with 160 members, you really can't champion a whole wide agenda by yourself. But with a little ingenuity and listen to people, you can plug holes. And we were able to do that with what became known as the part hole. And of course, if you listen to the gateway cities, it was not enough. If you listen to other cities and towns, they're saying it was too much. But we were able to do things like that. And the charter school reimbursement was one, I got that from, uh, from Mia Walsh. She had asked me to put some money in the supplemental budget. And then when I got to learn more about it, is everyone's fighting over deciles and formulas and all this confusing stuff that you really need some expertise in it. I was looking at the charter reimbursement. Now, there's something there, both pro and anti charter people can agree on, right? We made a promise that if you do a charter school, the cities and towns get the money back for a certain amount of years. And it's hard dollars. When we are playing around with that formula, you're looking at charter reimbursement, it's, it's just dollar for dollar. It's not any of this funny, funny math that they talk about, right? So it's little things like that, I think, moving forward. If we can hear from, uh, the cities and towns and from the school committee on ways to plug gaps. And I think the biggest thing, if you took all the money away from last year's education bill, the important thing were the priorities that I think came forward in gateway cities, English language learners. Those themes ran through the bill. So if you take away the money, those themes were at the top of the agenda. And people knew that cities like Everett, Chelsea, Lynn, Lawrence have been getting, find a nice word, um, not getting the shot into the stick for thirty years under the old formula. So if we keep with those priorities in the attention that cities like Chelsea have right now, we'll be able to plug some gaps and and we're here to listen and to hopefully put some stuff forward. So I I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I I'd like to speak. Can you hear me? Hi.
You muted yourself again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. Wow, I was going to say, if you can't hear me, that's really bad. Good evening, everyone. Uh, Sal and Dan, thank you very much for, um, coming to our meeting tonight. Um, the superintendent and her staff have worked very hard on this budget to try to stay in our means. What else can the Chelsea School Committee do? Uh, to let people know that the funding has to be there for these students in the city of Chelsea? Is there anything else we can do as school committee people?
Yeah, so there's always the advocacy piece, there's always, you know, making sure that your voice is heard at the State House. So cheers to Ways and Means on both sides, um, and to the Senate President, the Speaker of the House. But and it's education chairs as well. So I'm on the Education Committee, we just had a hearing, uh, yesterday on virtual learning and how things are going to be looking going forward and and the funding levels that we need to accomplish our goals, to make sure our kids don't get left behind, especially in communities that have a high number of low income children. That was my question that I put forward yesterday. How do we make sure that our kids who are the highest need districts are getting more than other communities where they don't need as much attention? And 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 we, we, you know, there's a lot of focus on 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 doing that, as I said, trying to put the money where where it's needed. But your advocacy also helps because, you know, anytime I think that people let their guard down, it's easy to make decisions that that don't, that don't impact you in a positive way. So I have told, and this is how I was going to end it, I I've told my city councils and my school committee members to band together and and write letters to our leadership and and the House and the Senate to make sure that that they understand how important this funding is for our communities. They get it, they all get it, but getting it and seeing it are two different things. So we have to make sure that they understand that you're watching the store as well. And, you know, in the environmental justice world too, there's, and and as Marisol said, and I know Danny and I have been working on this at Rosie Vincent, environmental justice, like, there's a lot of things that we can do that also impact our communities and our families. EJ Bill, we filed that bill, that that was our bill coming out of the House and the Senate. And it was written by people in Chelsea. And 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 we have been able, we, you know, impacted by all of the things that are happening to us. All these obstacles that we're in our face and and presented to us prior to this pandemic have exacerbated what we see today. And and we know that there are other ways besides just educational funding where we can make a difference. So passing some of those other bills is is important as well, uh, because that will also help our community go forward. So there's a whole host of things that you can help us out with, you know, getting these bills out of committee, getting them to the floor, getting votes on them, helping us move legislation that that will, that that's kind of been sitting there for a while, that now is needed more now than ever. Um, so then I can give you, I can send an email to the superintendent with a list of bills, uh, and to Kelly as well, to to let you know what bills that, you know, I see as important bills for Chelsea going forward. And and, you know, chapter seventy is actually, it's very, very important, but actually there are other places we can make a difference too.
Thank you very much, Sal. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you so much. Can you guys hear me? Okay, I don't know what's wrong with my computer. Thank you so much, Sal. And thank you so much, uh, Daniel, Dan, for being here. We appreciate it. And, um, we're going to go ahead and just take our votes. And I I have some comments that I'm I'm going to make about our our budgets. Uh, but I just want to thank you for your support, your ongoing support of Chelsea. Um, we feel it and we know that you're here for us. And, um, just can't think of two better people to to work with. And we know that you are our biggest cheerleaders and, um, we're just so fortunate to have such wonderful people representing us. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Great. Um, so we had our public hearing yesterday and I want to respond to a few comments. I do have some comments before we start voting tonight. Um, so I'll go ahead and get started. Um, so, good evening. And first, I'd like to thank my wonderful leadership team for working countless hours with me to make this budget process more transparent and engaging. I believe that as a team, we listened to our community and thus we were able to bring forward a budget and Student Opportunity Act plan that reflected the needs of our special Chelsea community. Also, I'd like to thank the many students, teachers, families, partners and school committee members who participated in this budget process. Uh, an additional thank you to so many people taking time out of their busy schedules to send in public comments as well. I will respond to a few items from the public comments right now. But overwhelmingly, our community is supportive of the budget that we put forth. Um, I would like to thank our Chelsea Teachers Union for working with us in this process as well as endorsing this budget and the Student Opportunity Act Plan put forth. And many of the comments we received during public common, uh, comment were in regards to class size. So I want to address, um, a couple of those, uh, and in particular regarding class size. Uh, we always want to try to lower class size no matter what the number is. But we also need to recognize we are a district that budgets class sizes at twenty-five per teacher salary. Um, sometimes due to scheduling, we go lower and sometimes a bit higher. Uh, an analysis of class size at Chelsea High School shows there are some regular education teachers who have class sizes of fifteen to seventeen, and then the teacher may have one class size of thirty. This reflects a scheduling issue rather than a need in particular for another salary at this time. In many classes, we also look more at the teacher to adult ratio rather than a class size. So in other words, in our co-taught classes, for example, with the teacher and then special education teacher, the ratio will go from one to thirty to one to fifteen. Uh, and we do agree with the comments that we need more ELL and special education teachers as well as social workers throughout our district. And as you can see, we have prioritized those in our Student Opportunity Act Plan. Again, I I am pleased to present your vote tonight, um, the budget for the school year 2021. Creating this budget was done with a lot of sorrow and pain as we had to recreate a budget that reflected the crisis around us. And when, as, as you know, when we originally planned for school year 2021 in the winter and the spring of twenty, we were filled with joy and hope at first for us in a while. And because we were living in robust economic times, the Student Opportunity Act had just been voted into law and then the crisis came. And we had no choice but to make difficult s- uh, decisions for this coming school year 2021. And that said, we remain a gateway school system that welcomes and educates all students and families. Especially now, our students and families need the support and stability our school system has always provided. And although we do not have the resources to launch new initiatives, the budget that we've created aligns to our vision as outlined in our district strategic plan and provides the financial resources to execute our strategy to prioritize social and emotional support, meet our goals and stay true to our vision. The budget that we presented for school year 2021 is a leveled budget. And as we just heard, it's, it's, it's conservative. We level fund our budget for school year, for this school year. Uh, and we budget, we have a shortfall of 2.2 million due to these aforementioned, af- aforementioned unavoidable costs. Therefore, we made decisions with integrity and with the most important and critical mission of teaching and learning at the center. As I mentioned earlier, I'm hoping this is the first of two budgets that I can present to you. Uh, we, again, we still have to get the final numbers as you just heard. And when we get those final numbers, we will have to revisit. We expect that the state legislature is revising the state budget over the summer, as you just heard. And as a result of lower revenue forecasts, we will then know our chapter seventy allocation. Our hope is that education will be a priority we can still advocate at the state level and that reductions will not be large in education. If this is the case, we may be able to take a look at the Student Opportunity Act initiatives and restore some cuts. Prior to the crisis, our budget planning process for the Student Opportunity Act was transparent and engaged many stakeholders, as you heard last night, in the comments. We held four community conversations in the fall. And one of the questions that we asked was where should we invest our resources? Then, before COVID nineteen hit us, the budget was released from the state in January with the reflected amount from the Student Opportunity Act included in this amount. We have three more community conversations, created an online survey, and we had 358 people respond. While we cannot implement new programs or initiatives that we had planned right now, the information we gathered had helped us create a three-year plan for Student Opportunity Act. And even though we may not receive the funding this year, we are still creating this plan because we know that down the road, we will when there is better times. So we will have a plan in place for this. The SOA plan and the budget reflects what we heard from multiple stakeholders and aligns to our strategy with the vision and goal of ensuring the elements of Chelsea Public Schools' vision of a graduate. We would like to thank all the stakeholders who participated in this process. So my closing thought, in closing, while we do not expect the current crisis or the challenges, I am confident that this budget reflects good stewardship while maintaining integrity and taking care of our greatest resources, our employee, who are our employees, and protecting our core business of teaching and learning. And at the center of it, our goal was to protect the classroom. Thank you to our students, our families, our staff, our community partners and the city of Chelsea for continually supporting education. Based on what I have seen since this pandemic began in the history of Chelsea, I know that we will come through this difficult time. And not only are we going to get through this time, we will rise and emerge even stronger than ever. And I just want to thank you all for, um, your time, your commitment. And I present both, uh, our Budget 2021 to you and our Student Opportunity Act Plan and Budget. Dr. Beta, before we continue, can we take a two-minute break?
That's, it's it's up to you, it's up to the school committee.
Awesome. Team, why don't we take a two-minute break? Stretch your legs, um, and and then get ready. Uh, we'll call the meeting back to order at seven forty-nine-ish. Thanks.
Alrighty, team. And let's get back into our agenda. Before going for a vote for the three items today, which is the budget of 2021, the SOA, and our resolution, do do any school committee members have questions or comments? Alrighty. Wonderful. Okay, so the first item on our agenda or our voting is no, it's under new business, so consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the school superintendent and approve the following line items amounts from the general fund for the 2020-2021 school budget totaling ninety-six million, five hundred and thirteen thousand, and three hundred and seven dollars. Explanation: The annual school budget must be approved by the school committee each year pursuant to the city charter and after a public hearing is held to provide an opportunity to hear public comment on the budget. The district is currently operating under the governor's COVID nineteen emergency orders and will be submitting its budget to the city of Chelsea prior to the city manager's submission of the city budget to the city council, currently scheduled for May eighteen, twenty twenty. The school, the school committee has authority to approve school budgets, but, oh, sorry, budgets under state law and the city charter. Ms. Sejas, can we get a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the school superintendent and approve the following line item amounts from the general fund for the 2020-2021 school budget totaling ninety-six million, five hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and seven. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah.
Ms. Santiago? Can we hear her? Ms. Santiago?
Sorry, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Sorry about that.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
That's eight votes on the affirmative with one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Next item, consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the school superintendent to approve the 2020-2020-2021 Student Opportunity Act Plan totaling in ten million, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, and three, and nine hundred and thirty dollars. Explanation: Fiscal year 2021 represents the first year of funding for Chelsea Public Schools under the Student Opportunity Act. Per the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the school committee is required to review and approve of the district's SOA plan submission. Ms. Sejas, may we get a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the school superintendent to approve the 2020-2021 Student Opportunity Act Plan totaling ten million, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
And Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Nine votes on the affirmative, the motion carries.
Nine votes in affirmative, motion carries. Last item on the agenda, consideration and action to adopt the resolution to support the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act funding for Chelsea Public Schools. Explanation: It is recommended that the Chelsea School Committee approve this resolution for the benefit of all students and families in Chelsea Public Schools. Ms. Sejas, may we get a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to adopt the resolution to support the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act funding for Chelsea Public Schools. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Nine votes on the affirmative, the motion carries.
Nine votes in affirmative, the motion carries. Thanks all. Before adjourned meeting, do any members of the school committee have a few comments or closing remarks they would like to add?
I would like to thank the superintendent and her office for all the hard work getting this budget and everything together for us. And they worked very hard and I know it took a lot of time to get the numbers up. And we'll just have to work together to make sure the state realizes and the federal government realizes that we need the money and we need more money. Thank you very much.
Chairwoman Garcia? Were we not voting on the resolution?
Yes, we already voted.
We did? I voted. I don't know. Uh-oh. I don't know. Sorry, guys.
It's okay, we, so we had three things in total to vote on tonight, so the budget.
Yes, I did vote on two things. And I just want to share to, if people are wondering, I didn't vote on the whole school budget. My husband does work at the high school, that is why I did not vote. But I am pleased with the budget. Still feeling hopeful with the Student Opportunity Act. You know, I won't give up hope, you never know, we deserve it, our children deserve it. And I just want to thank everybody, the Senator, our state rep, for supporting us and backing us. And we'll get working on letters with Ms. Garcia and we'll send them out because this is critical time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Velez.
I just want to thank the senator as well as our state rep Dan Ryan, superintendent of school, her team, for a great budget. Also, as you may see, I'm driving through the meeting. So I just want to make sure that I'm here for the support of the budget as a whole. And I think also the rest of my members from the school committee for your hard work and commitment for on the budget as well as for the students of the city of Chelsea.
Drive careful, Henry.
I'm driving careful. See both sides.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, make sure to keep your eyes on the road.
That's right.
Thank you.
Last, for any comments?
I would like to just say thank you for your support and thank you for all the times that you guys came to budget hearing, budget hearings and community conversations. I feel like we've been working incredibly hard with this in light of Student Opportunity Act. And even though we may not get funding right now, we have a plan. And all the information that we gathered through the community process and the vetting and the survey will help us with our strategic planning, so all is not wasted. We have a plan and we are ready to execute whenever the money is there. We realize that the crisis is unavoidable and there's nothing that we can do. And we are, as a community in Chelsea, we are stronger as a result of this crisis. And I know that we will pull through as we always do. I have so much hope and we're ready. We are ready for school year. I thank you for our school committee and just your, your amazing support, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to thank my members on the school committee. We are a team and I'm so happy that we approved the budget. Thank you to the central office, thank you to Beta. And thank you to those who are watching at home. Again, your continued advocacy shows the love that we have in this community and the, and the belief that we have in our, in all. So thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Everybody second.
Meeting adjourned right at eight P M. Have a good one, everyone, and stay safe. Thank you.